I don't know what agenda you're looking at. Did we give, did we give some old agendas out? Sorry. You scared me. It's like, I'm not prepared.
It is a very big deal and we're very excited as we have some good news to give you during this update. So the first part will be an update and I don't have a presentation other than what we placed in the packet. We'll be more than happy to follow along for the audience. So the first item that we wanted to update you on is that, as you recall, the route was coming from downtown Salt Lake City through North Salt Lake and Bountiful. And then it was making a left-hand turn or it was turning towards the west on Fifth South, making its way over to the front-runner station. This is great news for us. It's no longer doing that. It's going through Bountiful, through Centerville, into Farmington Station Park. So this is a great approach that I think the mayor was involved as we attended some of those technical meetings. And we're very happy that UTA was willing to hear our voice as we looked at it from a better regional point of view than just one stop away from Salt Lake. Please. No, please. Right. I think the way that the UTA was able to convince them was that throughout Centerville, it would simply become their bus where they don't get their high-end station. We do get those. We get them at 2600 South. We get it Renaissance Town Center. We get it at Almatador City Hall. And we're discussing currently the opportunity to add a fourth one as we would get one. I updated this council, I think, two weeks ago on a station on 350 West and Fifth South. That station is no longer being considered as it's going to go through. So as the mayor indicated, that's a huge win for Bountiful City. That's the first update. The second update is that UTA is doing some public outreach right now. And they're looking at various options that they're looking at regarding on that guided fixed way. So they're looking at where exactly that bus would have its own dedicated lane. It doesn't affect us too much because it's down Highway 89 to 2600 South. And as you're familiar with our city boundary, that is our boundary between us and North Salt Lake. So we are excited about that. They have a survey that you could participate. And I do believe I've got the hyperlink here where I think the survey is going to be extended for one more week. And so this area in yellow is the proposed exclusive bus lane, which this node over here is 2600 South. So it doesn't affect us too much other than that we do get the high-end stations that UTA is currently contemplating, but it's not going to go on its own dedicated bus lane. So the part of the survey is whether we include though this specific fixed guided way in Davis County versus Salt Lake, you can go ahead and share that information. And please, this is a work session, so please interrupt me at any time. The second, the second component that UTA is looking at, and this is their website, is where it stops or where it starts in Salt Lake City. The original parameter was at 200 South. The second one, what's being considered is Salt Lake City Central Station. The third one is at President Circle at the University of Utah. Health Sciences Mobility Hub is the fourth one, and then the fifth one is Research Park. This is huge for us as well. As we looked at it, it needs to be more of a regional route, not just from here to downtown. Obviously, to get to the U, you have to go through downtown. So the current Utah technical recommendation is to go to President Circle at the U. They're not necessarily asking us our opinion on this as they're simply gathering data or they're surveying anyone that comes across the hyperlink. Obviously, if they were to ask us what we would prefer, we would prefer the Research Park as it's a longer route. But we're very happy and pleased that UTA is considering President Circle. The original discussions that we had based on many other transportation agencies and cities based on that collaboration that the mayor and I have attended with those meetings with Wasatch Regional Council, was that they didn't want it to go to the U. They wanted to stop at 200 South. So we're very happy that they're considering four other alternatives that we know that we would have a higher ridership if we had. So that's part of the last update. And the last question is more of a Salt Lake City question as far as a specific route downtown. I think it would be good if you spent some time on this website, perhaps sharing your opinion. And you could always talk to other people to see if they have the time to go online and to share their specific opinions with UTA. Any questions on these updates?
Yes, I was curious, Francisco, if you could help me understand the, on pages eight, 10, and on 12, there's different little red boxes on the maps that look like that's where you would put a station.
Yeah.
So some of it looks like it's kind of in the middle of the road, the middle of Highway 89. So someone would exit in the middle of the road and then wait for a light and cross at the crosswalk?
Yeah, so I'm about to get to those exact pages. You're jumping the gun as far as what they're asking us in that recommendation, but I'm going to get to that and I'm going to explain to those in specific details. Any other questions about the update, Station Park, and the surveying that UTA is doing? We're very excited to be working with them on that. And again, as the mayor indicated, it is a huge deal for Bountiful City to take a broader regional approach. So the next thing that UTA wants us to do is to provide a recommendation as far as the, what type of station that they're currently in preliminary design stage at 2600 South. And Councilwoman Bradshaw, that's exactly what you're asking some questions about. So as we look at those, and I'm going to go back to the staff report here so the audience can follow along. Maybe. I don't know where that went. Here it is. I think we have it for the fourth time. Here we go. Yeah, so this is part of the survey. So what we need to pay attention here, and I can't, I can barely see. Yeah, this is it. So UTA has three different scenarios that they're currently looking at. No. Thank you, though. I'll just follow along on my packet. I got a packet right here. So the first scenario, this is all these stations, these are the same intersection. These are all 2600 South and Highway 89. So they're looked at, they're different modeling. And when it comes to transportation and traffic, they look at LOS, that's a level of service, and they apply a letter grade. It goes A through E. A means there's no traffic and it's free-flowing. E, or even F, F is pretty congested. As far as transportation planning, and Lloyd can correct me or not, when they're looking at different roads and traffic, you don't want to be at a level A. You want to use your resources accordingly. And I'm not saying that I'm for traffic and I love traffic, but you don't want to have a three-lane just so you can go about your business without sharing the road. So what they always strive to have as far as traffic patterns and concerns is about a C or slightly below a B. That's where you want to be. So if you look at this first table, Councilwoman Bradshaw, if, this is their modeling through their transportation planning and engineering. If nothing takes place, it's at a letter D and they're at 54.69 seconds. That's the intersection delay. So they looked at all the options that they've had and they identified three that are worth looking at. And those are the ones that are identified at a level E. No, I'm sorry. Those are all at a level D. And by the way, all of these specific scenarios are within two seconds of that no build. So they came up with their modeling and they came up with these concepts. So the first one on page eight is identified as a center station on Main Street. And if you can see there, that red box, as you can see, that is the station that would serve both northbound and southbound. The only thing I need to add is that on these three scenarios, currently the east-west connection, we currently have two left-hand turns. With all of these scenarios, it would add two left-hand turns going to, being added also to the north and south connection. So the major concern that UTA had on this specific scenario, and I'm going to go to page nine, the black pattern shows the left-turning lanes. And the concern that they had is that on this scenario, this is the center station, both ways being shared on one station, they have a separation of 2.3 feet, if you could barely see that. They don't believe that UDOT will accept that as the magic number. The magic number that they're looking at is approximately five feet. In this, in this specific scenario, it shaves less than two seconds. So moving on to the next one that they've modeled, now I'm on page 10. This is called the split center. Yeah, the split center station model. Actually, before I go into the second one, I want to go back to the first one. Notice the red line over here. That would be the new right-of-way line. As you could see, they would have to have a significant impact on these properties based on this scenario. Not just our gas station here or the tire shop, but it also affects, I want to add, North Salt Lake on this corner and Woodchase Cross on the other. So now we're moving on to the second scenario, which is the split center station. This one right here, it shaves less than, or 1.2 something seconds. It's still the same category. It's got, it does split the stations northbound and southbound, but again, it's got a major impact on all of the corners here as far as right-of-ways that would have to be acquired. The other thing I want to add is that on the left-to-left-hand turn, we're looking at one point, just one foot, which they identified this as insufficient separation for concurrent northbound, southbound left turns. So the third scenario. Now I'm looking at page 12, which is identified as the mixed-flow side stations. It's got a southbound station over here on the southwest quadrant. Yeah, and then the northbound on the northeast. It keeps the same, the same number of lanes going every direction. The separation is got, is identified at 5.6 on this side. And on the opposite corner is 4.4, which is not ideal, however, it's better than the other models. And yet, it does affect this property, but not as much as the other scenarios. So what UTA is saying, we've identified these three concepts for a high-end station. And they want us, as well as North Salt Lake and Woodchase Cross, to come up with a specific recommendation based on this data that they provided. So with that said, based on the impacts that it would have on our gas station over here, on this specific property, based on the fact that this one does take a little right-of-way, it's not as much as the other ones. As you saw, it was more in the terms of 20 or 30 feet from that existing right-of-way into that property. And this is why, as we looked at it, we believe that it makes more sense to go with this third option, which is identified as the mixed-flow side stations on this specific site. Does that answer your questions regarding to what we're seeking today? Or about, I'm sorry, about the presentation?
Yes, that was what I was wondering with those, with those lines in terms of moving those right-of-ways. You know, the gas station there on the corner of 2600 South and Highway 89 looks like it's, it's definitely impacted under any, any of the scenarios, less under this last one, but I think it's something we're going to want to just keep in mind, given that access is pretty important for a gas station.
Right. There were other scenarios that we could ask UTA to look at, but they didn't share those with us because the other ones go to an LOS of E and F, you know, which it adds a significant amount of wait time if we wanted to pursue those, where one of them ranges from 61 seconds to 113 seconds. So it makes complete sense why UTA didn't give us all eight scenarios as they looked at these equivalent ones to the existing pattern there.
Francisco, I think one thing that the council would want to know too is that in each of these stations that we're talking about, they're all walk, they're all walkout stations flat from the, from the bus itself. You just walk right out, somewhat like Traxx is. And so, but these times are really important because these times are all times by how many stops they make. So it becomes very significant to them and to us where, you know, where these will go and how it happens. I think one thing that's really interesting to me is that all the stuff that we've done to work on Five Points, all those kinds of things converge now with the Bus Rapid Transit and what's going on at Five Points. For the future of us getting BRT, that is, that is a critical piece for Bountiful and to where this, where this, where this BRT line is going. You know, they were having a real problem with BRT down in Provo for a while. It's gotten very popular. I mean, it's certainly a college town. That does make a difference. But I think, I think the money, the money difference from Bountiful, what money we're going to have to put into the project, that's, that's going to be significant. Also, although we'll get funds, we'll get funds from UTA and we'll probably also get funds from TIF, from the Wasatch Front Regional Council to help us with, with some of these items. But just, those are just a couple of points I thought, Francisco, that maybe the council would like to know.
Yeah, and as we've been meeting with UTA recently, this is more of their current ask as far as council providing a public recommendation on these. We did send a note back to them indicating that we'd love to see whatever concept they've got for Renaissance Town Center, City Hall, and they're working on that. But this is one that they were not necessarily stuck on, but they had three different concepts that varied as far as how much land they needed to acquire in order to move forward with, at the same time with, all within being a two-second delay or less. So as soon as we can get more information from UTA, Mr. Gary Hall and I will be more than happy to update you as needed as we get that information. We also have other questions regarding what would happen around the hospital district. Yeah, the hospital district and that relationship between the front-runner station. And also the new concept that UTA is exploring as far as a micro-transit, which is more of a UTA Uber or Lyft, where they pick you up from a specific corner in town and then you're able to ride the BRT all with one payment. So you get one transfer. So as we get, as we go farther down the line, we'll be more than happy to come back and provide another update to you. That's something that we would definitely want to do.
Is there, thank you for that explanation. Is there any reason why the northbound station couldn't be placed west of 2600?
On which, I'm sorry, could I ask you which scenario? Because we have to-
Scenario three.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just curious to know why it, why it has to block the access points to the gas station if it could go farther west?
Farther west, because, yeah, because that would be, that is considered a travel lane. If I could zoom in a little bit more.
No, no, excuse me. Just simply across the street from the southbound station. Somewhere, somewhere either, yeah, closer, farther west? Right above Kate's Head, Councilwoman Bradshaw?
Yeah, why across the street?
Is there, yeah, is there a reason why it couldn't go?
I can't think of the reason on the spot, but we can, we can get that answer as far as why, why not placing it on, on the south side instead of the north?
Just so we don't have to block access to the gas station. I just, I think that's something worth exploring.
You know, Francisco, you need to cross two lanes of Highway 2 to go from south to north. If both could be on the south, then it's just crossing one intersection.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly get that answer.
Oh, awesome. Thank you.
So yeah, we can, we can, we can get that answer.
Thank you.
I'm just dangerous enough to relay this information, but not provide a technical recommendation on the modeling and what takes place and the traffic pattern. So I'm not going to pretend that I have the answer. I don't think that we're looking for a vote on this. Oh, I am over time, but could I get at least a head nod that this is the preferred solution once we find out if we can shift that station to the south, the northbound station?
Moving that station, I think, is important if we can, but otherwise, I like this option better.
All right.
Francisco, I would, I would think that it would be good to have a work session where we have UTA come in and answer all of these questions. Not that you can't answer some, but they could answer all.
Yeah, we certainly invited them and we can set that up. I think we would need to have a little bit more time, but we can certainly do that.
I think that'll help before they make a, the council makes a decision about their favorite scenario.
Okay, so we can get that going. Thank you so much.
Well, we're back to you, Francisco, aren't we? Aren't we dealing with trails now?
We are, and we're going to delegate that to-
I was pretty sure it was trails because I see trail folks here in our midst.
Yeah, we're going to go ahead and turn the time over, if that's okay, to city planner Curtis Poole to give us the update.
Yeah, Curtis, nice to have you here. Thanks, Curtis.
It's good to be here. Let me back out a little bit here. So just as a, as a background, before we get into the actual implementation plan. Back in 2019, the council approved the Bountiful Trails Master Plan. And later on in the spring in 2020, the city reorganized the Trails Committee. And from May till now, they've been working very, very hard. We have a couple of the members here. They want to just raise their hands. Jesse, Bob here, Bob Larson is the chairman of the, of the committee. But we meet at least monthly and discuss the progression of the trails and the projects that we would like to accomplish in the city. The most recent project that many of you are aware of happened back in November of this year, creating the Downhill North Canyon Trail. That trail was the first attempt, I think, in decades to create a trail here in Bountiful. And so this was our, kind of our maiden voyage for the Trails Committee. And yeah, there, it's not completely done. We're about 85% completed with that trail. There's some tweaks that need to be made. Signage needs to still be placed up there, but the majority of that trail is completed. That trail was completed with 158 volunteers, 444 hours of service. Wind River Construction donated a couple of employees and an excavator to prepare the ground up there. So it was a great project to start on and it was a really, it kind of showed that we're serious about this. And as we've met since then as a, as a committee, the, what we've found is it's, it's like the snowball rolling. There's a lot more people that are starting to show interest in it. Companies are wanting to donate products, materials, or labor to help on future projects. We have others that are wanting to help with bids and do things like that on future projects. But what's in the packet tonight is the implementation plan. So back in November, the city approved, the residents approved a $9 million bond. Two million of that went to the trails. And that kind of escalated the ability that we had to create some of these projects and complete some of these projects. So what you have before you is the plan to implement this trail network, the Bountiful Trails Master Plan. It's, it's a three-year plan because, and correct me if I'm wrong, Gary, but the bond that has been passed, we have three years to use that, those proceeds. And, and so this plan is really set up to maximize the resources that we have within that three-year time period. Now, there are going to be some trails that are going to continue past that three years and we, and we know that and because of either acquiring property to complete them or whatnot. So this first slide is kind of showing the progression of the trails over the next three years. Now, I want to make a careful note that this isn't set in stone. We don't want the council or the public to think and to look at this and go, oh, well, you promised, and you show here on this chart that there should be a trail completed on this, on this date. That's not the case. This is really meant to be an estimated timeframe. As trail projects progress, there's a lot of approvals that need to happen. Some of these projects are going to happen on Forest Service property and they need to go through NEPA approval to get that. Some are going to be a little bit more complex than others. And so depending on, on the nature of those approvals and quite frankly, resources and commitment by trail partners, we may bump trails up and down the list depending on the resources that we have available at that time. So the first that I want to just kind of concentrate on is what we're doing for 2021. It's this group right here. And in 2021, we have the ongoing North Canyon Downhill Trail that will complete this coming year. A Mueller Park Downhill Trail. We have received a design from a consultant that we hired last year that designed a couple of trails coming off of Mueller Park. We're still kind of in the designing stage of that one, but we're hopefully going to complete that this year. It will need to be bid out and have a trail consultant actually build it because it's more- because it's more of a technical trail. And then we have the Holbrook Canyon Bridges, which we are, we have the designs for. And we will be placing those, replacing six bridges up Holbrook Canyon this year. We have the North Canyon Trailhead that we're going to be working.
That's money that came from the county still? Do we still have money from the county for those bridges?
Yes. So part of it, and those bridges, they're going to be a little expensive. But yeah, that money will offset what we spend up in Holbrook. And then we have the North Canyon Trailhead, and then we'll work on a Holbrook to Ward network or a trail connection this year, at least trying to identify a spot. Now, these, this one is all on city property. And so we don't really need to work with Forest Service to get NEPA approval. However, there's going to be some elements of, to try to get up and out of each of the canyons because they're steep. And so we'll need to find out the best place to make that cross. So I'll stop right here. Do you guys have any questions about what's happening in 2021? Any concerns? All right. And just, just real brief. So on each of these, you'll see a conceptual timeframe bidding and then the, the trail project itself. The idea and the intent is that we start working on concepts later on in the, the summertime and in the fall so that come early spring, we start bidding on, have consultants bid on it. But it's also important because that's when a lot of grant money becomes available, is in the early part of the summertime. And the committee is actually working on a big grant right now through GOAT that would be about $500,000. And the nice thing about having the bond right now is that previously we couldn't apply for those grants because we needed to, to put, to put money up front or have some matching money. And now we have the capability to do that. And so we can go after some of these, these larger grants.
Can I ask, are there committee members that do grant?
Yeah.
To help with that?
Yes.
How nice. What a great committee.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
They, they are very specialized and they, and they have different niches as far as what kind of trail experience they have. We have equestrian, we have bikers, we have hikers, we have a mix, we have trail runners. So it's a broad mix within that group and also capabilities that, that each have. I'll stop on this slide right here. So this again is a very estimated cost breakdown and priority. And I'll kind of explain why we put A, B, C on here. So the A trails are the ones that are kind of the low-hanging fruit. Either that we have a lot of support behind, we have, it's either on city property or it's an easier trail to complete. Or we already have money put aside for that. For example, like the North Canyon Trailhead, we've received $500,000 from the county for that. And so that, that helps out with that project. And the B category is, is a mix. There, there's going to be some trails within that B category that is going to be on private property that will take careful work with private property owners to gain access through their property, either through easements or, or purchasing. The C category is kind of our pie in the skies. We, we have projects that are going to be a little bit more complex that, that are definitely going to require more involvement from private property owners. For example, like the Creekside to the Mueller Park Trail that you're well aware of. And just again, to reiterate, with the $2 million bond, we're not coming after private property owners right now. We don't want anybody to feel that that's what that money is going for. And none of these trails are going to be built, for example, talking about Creekside to Mueller, until all of the property has either had an easement on it, a public easement, or we have the property to build. So we're not going to do a trail that goes halfway up that canyon and stop at a private property owner until we get that one and then keep going up. We want to have a complete network before we build a trail. That's going to take many, many years. But, and, and just to jump back to this slide, and that's why on these, it's just showing as a hatched bar. We want to keep it there on the, the list. It will be an ongoing work that we're going to do. But it's, you know, as opportunities arise, we'll, we'll, we'll go after them. The cost breakdown is really, comes from two different places. One is from the consultant that was retained by the city to develop the Bountiful Trails Master Plan. We used some of their costs and then used that breakdown to then turn around and get into some of the other trails that we wanted to do. As far as the, the length of the trail, we estimated, okay, they're estimating this trail is going to be this much. This one is similar, it's going to be about this much. That's what these cost breakdown is. Now, we all know that these costs are going to likely increase. They never, they never go down. However, a lot of this will be offset from grants, from volunteer work and from other things like that. So at the end of the, of this, to create a lot of these trails, with the exception of the Washington Park to Creekside and Creekside to Mueller, it's about $4.3 million. Obviously, the bond doesn't cover all of that. So we are going to need help through grants and private, private donations to complete that. Any questions about this?
Questions from the council?
I don't have questions. I'm just excited for these projects to get off the ground. I'm grateful to the volunteers in the Trails Committee to put time into it. I'm looking forward to coming and helping in the spring on the trails project.
I think this is one of the most exciting things that have happened for a long time. I think this will be one of the great projects for Bountiful. You know, for my, for my children, but particularly for my grandchildren. There's, there's going to be more and more of a need. And we, by the time we get all those done, we may be almost where Greg is now. I mean, seriously, seriously, when we, when we get it done, we just have the perfect, everybody tells me that knows trails, that we have the perfect kind of inclines and everything else for these, for these kind of trails. And connecting these east-west trails into the Bonneville Shoreline Trail is, of course, the county's putting a million dollars into extending and improving that trail. All of these things are really, really priorities. I, I think, I think this is really, really a fun part of what we're doing here in the city.
It definitely is. And, and that's a good place to, to maybe end on, on what I have to present to you is this last slide right here. So.
One other thing that is, I love how you're involving the construction people, all these people that are, all of these people that want to help. I think this is the perfect place to, to get that help. And you guys are doing a fabulous job. Bob, you, the, the others that are on the, on, on this trail, you're taking it seriously because this is something you really want to.
And quite frankly, the, the feedback that we had from Wind River was they loved doing this and they wanted to help on other projects. The two that were up there, they, they said they'd rather be up there in the forest than down on a street working, so.
And as we, as we ran out of time here, I just want to say, it was, I think it was Bob the one that got Wind River construction to come out and help us out. So, so the, that, that Trust Committee, they're really doing their job.
Well, Bob, he takes their arm and puts it behind their back.
I think he does.
Over to physical therapy and then he lifts it until they say yes.
Whatever he's doing is working, so.
Yes, but this will, this will be where I end is on this map. So if we have all of these trails completed, this is what our trail network could look like throughout the city. So we have obviously connections from the interior city of the city heading up into the mountains. We have cross trail networks that connect to one another. We have downhill, we have equestrian. Over in this section, we have more of a motorized type of, of access. So those on their motorcycles or four-wheelers, they can access this part of the, the trail network. So it's, it will really be a robust and economic boost, I believe, for the city. Any questions?
Not, not a question, but just simply a common moving part of, like everyone else, I'm very, very excited about this. And I just want to compliment the city on, on doing their best to keep those property owners in the loop. And I just hope that we continue that moving forward. I know we have one property owner here and I just, I just, he has complimented the city on how receptive advice have been to the needs and concerns of those people who might be affected. And since this is a years-long project, I just hope we will continue with that in that spirit. So thanks for all your doing. This is going to be amazing.
Thank you, and that's the intention.
I have, I have another question. I know this isn't exactly in line with these trails that we're talking about, but is there, is there any, does anyone have any answers about the potential of striping the Bountiful Boulevard for walkers or cyclists? Or is that, is that something that we're looking at?
It could be. And I, I'll defer to our city engineer on that. I know there was a thought about it at one time, right? But I'm not sure the. Yeah, it, it, it could be part of this.
I mean, North Salt Lake already has striking to Bountiful, to the Bountiful property line. And to have that extended would be, that would be something, Gary, do you?
I was just going to say, North Salt Lake's kind of restrictive. We just let people, when they come to Bountiful, they can go where they want.
So it's a matter of freedom?
It just is freedom. We're patriots here.
Well, thanks to the committee and thanks for your work, Curtis. And it's exciting.
So Curtis, could I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we see many deer on these trails?
Quite a few.
Quite a few?
I think it's cougars that you should be concerned.
We had many that have had run-ins with any of the deer?
Like mountain bikers, you mean?
Like mountain biker getting hit by a deer or things like that? Or do they pretty well give you the road?
Not that I'm worried. Usually they'll get out of your way.
As a, as a mountain biker, I can tell you the deer move out of your way. It's the wild turkeys that won't give way on the trail.
I got you. It's the turkeys.
They're delicious. Yeah, they're delicious.
I think the wild turkeys would take on the German shepherd, honestly. They were very defensive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. That's really, that, those are fun, those are fun discussions. Thank you. Gary, last item, some legislative updates from you.
Thank you, counsel. Tonight at seven, we'll have Representative Ray Ward come and be able to talk more about HB 82 with him. For now, I'm going to skip over the update on that bill and move on to the other ones. And there'll probably be a few minutes at the end of the work session to come back to that if you'd like. But I, I want to update you on a few more, just going down the list. And there are a few copies of this legislative update, if anybody here in the public wants to see them over on the table. So on H, House Bill 98, Local Government Building Regulation Minimums, this is Paul Ray's bill that would have allowed, would allow a developer to hire their own plan review or building inspection if they simply didn't want to go through the local government. It's sort of like the, yeah, sort of, sort of like, well, there's, there's some, there's some interest, some self-interest there. Their argument is that the work isn't being done fast enough and that cities are charging too much. And, you know, the, the league did a study over the last summer that showed turnaround times on plan reviews and building inspections. And the vast majority of cities are, are doing it well within the bound, the, some of the expectations. But the Home Builders Association wasn't really satisfied with this. So this bill is being proposed by them through Paul Ray, who I think is the president of the Home Builders Association.
The Northern Utah Home Builders, yeah.
Northern. And we were told about a week ago that, that leadership was, was cool on this bill, but nothing's ever dead until the session's over. Right now, the, the people who are interested in this bill, the home builders in particular, are trying to come to some compromise with the league on turnaround times and sort of a minimum standard on how quickly they can get building inspections. And at what point, they may be able to pick their own, they may be able to pick an independent building inspector, if, for example, the city can't get to them within three days or something like that. So we're keeping a close eye on this one. Senate Bill 18 has improved, but it still increases the property tax exemption. This one is an interesting one because the state constitution actually prohibits exemptions of property tax that are considered non-dominimus. And the legislature has been stretching what dominimus, non-dominimus means. It, it used to be, you know, $2,000 or $3,000, and then it became $15,000. And now there's a proposal to make it $50,000. It's not non-dominimus at my house. But the bill has been reduced down to $25,000, but, and the impact is reduced on, I think it's down to somewhere around $400,000 or $500,000 statewide for cities, which is much better than the $4 or $5 million. However, it's still a concern and so we recommend being opposed. Property tax deferral modifications. This is Senator Fillmore's bill that would defer paying property taxes for a home valued less than $500,000 if the, $500,000 if the owner is 65, 66 years old or older. Basically, they wouldn't have to pay any property tax until their home was sold. And, you know, the concern with that is there's, there is a lag time in revenue for communities. And at some point, that lag time would, could not be made up without a property tax increase. The other problem with that bill in particular is that it really puts the burden of paying the taxes on the estate or on the family once the homeowner passes away or sells the house, which probably is going to get wrapped into the new resale value of the home and probably will impact housing affordability, not, not do anything to help it. In addition, there are private and other tools available for people who need property tax relief. And so this looks like a solution to a problem that, that doesn't exist, that has some pretty significant consequences. So we recommend being opposed to that. Let's see, Senate Bill 65, here's one we, we would like to support. This is a bill by Wayne Harper that gives Tools an additional redevelopment agency opportunity. As you probably all know, at the end of a, when a, when a redevelopment agency is created, a base valuation is created at the time of creation. And then as property values grow, the increment between what the original valuation was and the new valuation goes back into the RDA for Economic Development. Over time, that allows cities to have the growth, the new growth put back into those blighted or, or other areas needing redevelopment. At the end of that period, what happens is that new growth all goes back to the taxing entities. And so Bountiful, part of our property tax is being diverted right now to our RDA. Part of the school districts is being diverted to the RDA, part of the counties, all by mutual agreement. What this bill would do is, is actually pretty unique. It would say at the end of an RDA, if a city wanted to do this, it's an optional tool, that property tax rate, rather than going back to the city's general fund in our case, would become its own separate property tax rate for dedicated for economic development. How that would be used would be up to the redevelopment agency, which is the City Council Board, and could be used for everything from affordable housing to the kind of economic development efforts that we're doing now. The advantage is that that allows the property tax rate to be separated from the general fund rate so that there's not the temptation to just let that roll into general fund revenues, which, and it's, it's very easy, it's very hard for economic development to not be outweighed by things like public safety or streets. So it really earmarks that proper, that money. There's no property tax increase to a resident at the end of the RDA. And then on top of that, if other agencies wanted to participate through, in a local agreement, they'd be allowed to do that. So for years, the league has been asking the legislature to give us some additional economic development tools. It's one reason I think it's valuable to support this. It's one reason I think it's valuable to support this is, this is a, this is a, an answer to a question we've been asking for a long time. Won't have any effect until, we won't be an option for us until our RDA runs out in in several years, in about 15 years. And so, but it'll be a nice tool for the future. Any questions about that one, Council? Okay. Moving on, then we have our tax levy for animal control from Todd Wyler. This is the bill that we worked on with Davis County to find find a dedicated revenue source for animal control and. And and it would eliminate the interlocal agreement that all of the cities have with Davis County. You know, the challenge that we have found over the years, there have been many different models for for how to pay for animal control services. Is that the city that is least willing to pay is the one that sort of dictates how much animal control can spend. And over time, it's led to to really a lack of care in the facilities. I think earlier this year, several of us went and saw those facilities, who was able to?
Seen them, yeah, we've got a call there.
I think almost everybody's been there, and so you know what the countable animal care facilities are like in the county, they've been neglected for a long time. This would create a new property tax levy that the county could impose. But only on two conditions, the first is they have to provide animal control to all of the cities in the county. So the second is that the the initial rate increase for that has to be offset by a decrease in the rate from the county. And from the cities for our proportionate share, so that initially there is no tax impact on residents. So basically, we would reduce our property tax rate, the amount that we're paying to Davis County for animal control. Right now, we pay Davis County about $120,000, I think. And I saw, yeah, about $120,000 a year, which is a bargain. We, there's no way we could provide animal control services for anywhere near that if we were to do it ourselves. And so that that's what this will be, this bill passed the Senate today. Appreciate Todd Wyler for working with that with us on that, it passed unanimously and and will be in the House soon. So.
Question about that one, if I could, Mayor?
Please.
So the. The separating off of the fire budget to its own taxing entity. Has some safeguards in place, as does the rec district. In having city managers and mayors serving on a budget committee of sort for at least some of those distinct taxing entities. What protections will be in place? In this facility and with this entity to to keep their budget from spiraling out of control?
So that's that's a great question, and in fact, it's the whole purpose of the bill. The county could do this right now through by creating a special service district. The cities felt like it was not in our best interest to have another special service district in the county. What this allows them to do is to have a separate tax to which, which will be governed by the county commissioners. Directly with the elected officials.
Thank you.
So that's, that was a really key piece of this, thank you.
And we should probably mention that the the facility is garbage, but there's a lot of really dedicated people that work there and. Undo their best to carry out their services, which is understood with what you said, so.
Yeah. The last one I have is is an is a new bill, it's, we've known it's going to been coming for a long time. And it's Senate Bill 164, Utah Housing Affordability Amendments, which is sponsored by Jake Andrig. The bill, it was intended, has been intended to reflect the recommendations of the. Housing affordability, Housing Affordability Task Force that's been meeting throughout the summer. This is a group that was created by the legislature and prior legislation that involves. Representatives from the housing development community, from Home Builders Association, from the legislature. From the counties, from some of the affordable housing groups. And three local government representatives. And there are some things in here that are consensus, the interesting thing about this bill, though, is it. Currently does not reflect everything that was recommended by the committee. Some of the things are, but there are at least two provisions in here that are the most concerning to us. That are in this bill that were that were put in there at the request of of the housing and development community. The first would do away with what they call inclusionary zoning. So we don't use this tool, but some cities do. Inclusionary zoning is the creation of a zone, within certain zones. New development is required to build a a certain percentage of affordable housing. So if if they come in with a proposal, there's a certain amount of that that has to be affordable below area median income or or whatever standards are set. This would, this would do away with that and and instead would require cities that if they required. A developer to build affordable housing, the city would have to reimburse the developer for that affordable housing. This doesn't really, that doesn't really, and that's one of the league's concerns, is that that doesn't really make anything more affordable, doesn't really help affordability in the state. It simply helps the profits of the development community. The second bill, or the second portion of the bill that we're very concerned about, has to do with development fees. So all cities charge, I'm talking about impact fees in this case, which are paid on by developers on new development to pay for the costs of infrastructure. Development fees would be things like fees for plan check reviews, building inspections, review of of building plans. On and on, those fees are, we are required right now, they they have to be. Reasonable, a reasonable estimation of the cost that we actually charge, but that it actually costs. But some of them, like the building permit fee, is simply a percentage based off of the value of the home. It's been an accepted practice for a long time. There is a feeling amongst the development community that cities are overcharging these fees. And that that is why homes are unaffordable. I mean, they they say it unabashedly, the reason that homes are unaffordable is because cities are charging too much in fees. Has nothing to do with land value, it has nothing to do with scarcity, it has nothing to do with profit. It's it's because cities are charging too much. So in an effort to curb that, what they want us to do is take each one of those fees. And record them separately by type of fee. And then we have to also be able to track them by the year they were received, the project from which they are collected. The project for which the funds are budgeted and the date for expected expenditure. Now, these fees aren't project, aren't budgeted for a specific project. So that's, that shows you the lack of understanding of what the fees are even used for. Nor are they projected to be spent in a given year, they go into general fund to offset the cost of providing the service. Nevertheless, we would have to do this, and then we would have to submit a report annually to the state auditor. To demonstrate that we were in compliance with it. Just the administration, I I took some time to say that all that specifically, I know we're running short on time, because it's burdensome to listen to. Imagine doing it. And again, it doesn't make anything less affordable, it just primarily impacts developer costs. So these are our recommendations, Council. We will, I'll clean this up a little bit, and then we'll post this on the city's website and let our residents take a look at it. Any questions?
Thank you, Gary. Maybe just as something interesting about Senator Andrig, I was speaking to him one day, he told me. That is in his constituency for the last several years, that his constituency has grown by 25,000 people a year. Where he represents, what he represents, so you can see the growth of Northern Utah County. In everything that he's doing, kind of amazing. All right, does anyone need to take a break, are we okay to just move on, everybody okay?
Miranda, do we need to stop?